The new session will begin now, immediately followed by the city council meeting of December 3rd, 2025. We have approval of minutes, a report of correspondence by city clerk. We have no public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading. Number one is a resolution to amend ordinance 0112502 on second reading. Number two is an ordinance to amend and supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title 16 Land Development Code in regard to several proposed amendments. Number three is an ordinance to amend and supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking Section 1020010, Schedule 39 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, adding 272 Sanford Street, 141 Sedan Street, 116 Livingston Avenue. Number four is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain real property within the City for public purposes. Number five is an ordinance to amend and supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title 5 Business Licenses and Regulations in regards to Rent Control Code. Number six is an ordinance to amend and supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title 15 Buildings and Construction in regard to permit fees and hold harmless agreements. Requirements. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one is an ordinance to adopt a redevelopment plan for the New Brunswick Parker Landing Lane Redevelopment Plan area in the City of New Brunswick. Number two is an ordinance to amend and supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking Section 1020010, Schedule 39 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, adding 47 Wright Place, 109 Walbin Street, and 267 Seaman Street. We then have resolutions, 1 to 32. Number one is approve agenda amendments. Two is approve payroll. Three authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Number four is approve request for rolling street closure and use of city property requested by Ruckert University for the Big Chill 5K charity road race. Number five is approve request for annual holiday austrian carriage ride for 2025 requested by New Brunswick City Market. Number six is to approve resolution to refer the Parker Landing Lane Redevelopment Plan to the Planning Board for review and report. Seven is approve amendment of resolution R092519, additional amount of $67,608.61 with Garrison Enterprises Incorporated. Number eight is approve award contract with Lex Nexus Cop... Solutions Incorporated for online access to accident reports for the police department. Number nine is authorize professional service agreement with Patrick Madden LLC for conflict labor counsel. Number 10 is approve amendment of resolution R102510, additional amount of $39,187.50 with InStead Municipal Systems doing business as First Bike Corporation. 11 authorized purchase by the police department under New Jersey State approved co-op number 65 MCES CCPS, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Pricing System for Nielsen Ford and Maristown Incorporated. 12 approved Chapter 159 budget insertion, New Jersey Department of Transportation grant for Lewis Street. Number 13 is approve purchase by administration department under New Jersey State contract M0483/24-TLE71883 Dell Naspo Computers Equipment Pennsylvania and New Jersey from Dell Marketing. 14 authorized tax collector to cancel liens on Block 133, Lot 1602, Cremson Avenue, and Block 29, Lot 302, French Street. 15 authorize refund to Rafael Mattis in total amount of $4,877.68 against utility account number 37540, Lot 419, Lot 43, 242 Hamilton Street due to billing adjustment. 16 approve resolution for 2025 municipal budget transfers. Number 17 is advise the consent to community arts council in regards to appointments of Robert Bellvin and Melissa Pepin. Number 18 advising consent to board of ethics reappointments, Donovan Cabbage, Jeanette Torres. 19 is advising consent to cable television advisories committee reappointments and deployment of Christopher Sisico, Beth Binday, and Dorina Villanueva. 20 is the advising consent to the library board of trustees, reappointments and appointment, Nadia Adorno, Susan Todd, Julio Alacino, and Amanda Diaz. 25, 21 is advising consent to the parking authority board of reappointment, Kevin McTiernan. 22 advising consent to Parks and Court Guardians Commission reappointments, Joshua Best, Denise Zimmer, Zoltan Zokelli. 23 advising consent to property maintenance code board of POs reappointments, Peter Lampin, Thomas Valenti. 24 advising consent to traffic commission board reappointments, Michael Tublin, Gail Lockhart. 25 authorized purchase by Dial-A-Ride under the Bergen County Cooperative Purchasing System, former New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Alliance from Rohair Enterprises Incorporated doing brother, doing business as Rohar Bus Sales. 26 is approve amendment to resolution R032567, additional amount of $414,018.6 with French Perillo Associates PA. 27 approve amendment of resolution R062487, supplemental services number three with CP Engineers LLC doing business as CP Engineer. 28 advising consent to rent control board reappointments, Wendy Stellatella, Anthony Vignola, and Barbara Blackwell. 29 approve resolution authorizing renewal of memorandum of understanding between the City of New Brunswick and Middlesex County for Middlesex County Healthcare Tios. 30 is authorized purchase by the fire department under the Bergen County Cooperative Purchasing System, former New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Alliance from Toshiba America Business Solutions doing business as Toshiba Business Solutions and Card Data System. 31 is a resolution granting permission to the New Jersey Historical Commission to install a historic marker at Crossroads Theater Company. And 32 authorized tax collector to transfer credits on several tax and utility accounts. We then have items for discussion by council, including the proposed city council meeting scheduled for 2026. Public comment and dates to remember, agenda review December 17th filed immediately by the city council meeting of December 17th. Now have the meeting go call.
Councilmember Escobar is excused. Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Here.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig is absent. Council Vice President Castaneda?
Here.
Council President Anderson?
Here.
Please be advised that notice requirements of the open public meeting ask have complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed, the city clerk has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in city hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the home news. Would you stand? Again?
Act like the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, a moment of silence for our men and women in our military, not only here in the United States, but all throughout the world, especially those that are in conflict. Bless them. Thank you.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Madam City Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate department?
Yes, Council President. The correspondence received by the city first office was forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Thank you. We have ordinances for discussion on second reading. However, a special one for number one is a resolution to amend ordinance 0112502 on second reading, an ordinance to amend and supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title 17 Zoning in regard to several proposed amendments. Again, a motion to have this amended?
Motion.
Certainly. Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
And now we have an ordinance to amend and supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title 17 Zoning in regard to several, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Council President.
We do that.
You need another motion to have that particular ordinance which you just amended listed for public hearing on second reading at your December 17th meeting, please.
Okay, so the ordinance number one would be just like a first?
First reading, yes. You need a motion to second.
Motion.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
I apologize.
Thank you. No problem.
We now have an ordinance. Number two is an ordinance to amend and supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title 16 Land Development Code in regard to several proposed amendments. Any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments? We are preparing to open the public hearing on the ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please approach the council by way of the microphone. Please give your name and address for the record. You have up to five minutes.
Good evening, Council. Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I want to know why didn't you open it up for the first vote that you had? You took, you took a vote on a resolution to amend an ordinance, but you didn't give the public a chance to comment.
They did for a, it's like doing it for a first reading.
Mr. Council President, with respect to the resolution, we could have opened it up. We, we have the public comment at the second reading, but it's certainly if the members of the public wanted to ask questions about what was amended, that's a fair question.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't have five minutes on each of these, but I just wanted to ask what's the, what's changing and why? I think it's good for you to explain what's going on to the public. So there's two ordinances. One is going to be delayed for a final vote at your next meeting, but the second ordinance is also on a similar topic. You're changing parts of the city code. So the one that's delayed would be to change the zoning, and the one that is, you know, we're in a hearing to, hearing on right now is for the land development code. Can you remind us what this is about and why you're making these changes to those codes?
Sure. Mr. Dominguez?
Certainly, Council President. So with regard to Title 16 Land Development Code that's up currently, we are modifying both the application fees and the escrow fees, simplifying the calculation process over time. We try to make it better and better and better, and it became an unruly monster of a big Excel sheet of complications, and we were adopting best practices and simplifying the way that they're calculated. And additionally, we are expanding the types of projects that would be subject to site planning essentially. They still have to be reviewed by the city, but they will be able to obtain administrative approval for this necessary, necessitating a full site land hearing at the plant or zone for as well, actually the planning work is, if they have any kind of variance like that, they would, if they would potentially go to the zoning board, they would not be able to be exempted.
So that was both of them?
Would you like to speak on the first one for a second?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, we had the ordinance met at the planning board. I mentioned that one of the components that was resuming a parcel might need some wordsmithing. And in speaking to the tax investor and Mr. Shanny, we determined that this parcel had been missed potentially several times over the decades for rezoning, it's a split zone lot. And the specific wording that we saw was one that would guarantee that it would be interpreted correctly to be a consolidation of the zoning for the entire lot.
Got it. And so the wordsmithing was what necessitated the resolution to change it and delay the final adoption. Thank you. That's all on these.
Anyone else from the public on that ordinance only? Seeing none?
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Number three is an ordinance to amend and supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking Section 1020010, Schedule 39 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, we're adding 272 Sanford Street, 141 Sedan Street, and 116 Livingston Avenue. Any fellow council members have any questions? Okay, again, we'll open it up to the public, one time up. You have up to five minutes. Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Number four is an ordinance authorizing acquisition of certain real property within the city for public purposes. Any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments? Again, we'll open this up to the public. Again, one time up for this ordinance, up to five minutes. Your name and address for the record.
Good evening again, Charlie Cradaville, Sedan Street, New Brunswick. So Mayor Cahill announced that the firehouse would be built on roughly this same site back in 2015 was when that announcement was made. It's been more than 10 years since that announcement. What progress can you report?
Mr. Dominguez?
Council President, members of the council, the building of the firehouse has gone through many iterations, working with experts in the architecture field to focus on firehouses. And so we are at a point now where the design concept is complete, and we'll be looking to move to construction drawings.
Can you tell us a little more about the design concept? Who designed it and what is, you know, contemplated for the site?
So MW Studios is a known, well-known architect who builds firehouses across the country. They recently built one or two in New Jersey. They've guided us on that under the direction of the current fire director and previous fire director. The firehouse has all of the modern requirements of a firehouse, not just in terms of fire apparatus, but in terms of living quarters and operations that a firefighter has to go through and renew some motion guidelines, et cetera.
And this, there's sort of an interim fix to the situation here, where there's a temporary building in the middle of the intersection. I noticed some work being done on it today. How is that temporary solution working out, and will this project actually be completed before the temporary firehouse three-year term ends?
Well, I think that's the idea of having it over three years, having it all done to that. But, Mr. Dominguez, sir?
So I think your answer is correct, Council President. It is a phase in process. The temporary structure permits us to have the apparatus in a way where it can be contained through the building of the next building.
Okay. And there are three properties that this would enable the city to use eminent domain to take if you can't work out an agreement with the existing property owners. Can you tell me, have you had discussions? Has the city had discussions with the existing property owners? Have you made any progress on land acquisition?
Negotiations are going on. Is that right, Mr. Dominguez?
We've been in touch with the property owners, yes, sir.
All three?
That's all three, yes.
Okay. And I guess, you know, I'll speak a little bit about this. I'm concerned at the amount of time this has taken, and I'm concerned about the priorities of the city while we see, you know, enormous construction projects go up in a short time. This city was on notice back in 2010 that the concrete floor that those fire engines parked on top of was not going to last much longer, and that it needed repairs. You know, I, I want to confirm, the city's known that since 2010, right? When you had an audit done?
I'm not sure. I was.
Council President, the building, the condition of the building has always been under scrutiny. It's an old building. We've made, we've made constant improvements to that building to its end of life, and now it's come to its end of life, including repairs since 2012.
And so what is planned for the building if it's at its end of life?
The building is being evaluated for when its next iteration could be, how many egresses it has with the current structure going to accommodate, so that's, that's worth monitoring.
Okay, so it, it may, it may survive into the future?
It's going to survive for the next three years.
Oh, it has to. But, yeah, I guess the reason I ask is because in my neighborhood, there's an old firehouse in, yeah, right around that same time, 2010, you know, Mayor Cahill said, we're going to turn this into a community center and a firefighter's museum. And, you know, of course, the company that was brought in to do the project didn't deliver on time, didn't deliver on budget, and we still don't have a firefighter's museum. So I'll talk a little bit later about some of the other ways the city is disrespecting or not honoring our firefighters. But, you know, to me, this is an example of neglect, you know, and broken promises. You had a project, you promised to deliver, and you didn't deliver. How are we to believe that this is going to be delivered in a timely fashion, considering the project's already been on the table for over a decade? Please, can you assure us that you'll do things timely and what's, you know, what can you do to assure us that you're actually putting the interests of the city and its firefighters above things like downtown redevelopment, of which you've had, you know, about a dozen buildings go up in that same time?
Well, I think you're talking about apples and oranges. And so I think they're totally two different statuses here, so something like that. But we're always concerned with our firefighters, and as far as I'm concerned, they're the best ones around. So we'll continue to, you know, fight for them.
Okay, I hope we'll do better and get this done.
Anyone else on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Number five is an ordinance to amend and supplementary revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title 5 Business Licenses and Regulations in regard to Rent Control Code. Mr. Dominguez, could you just speak on that for a little bit?
Certainly, Council President. Thank you. Um, let's sort of, let's go in with the permissions of the current. So first is an update on the fees. We're not increasing the fee for registration for next year, but we are increasing essentially the late fee by adding it to the same rate as the registration fee going forward. So then in the future, we only have to adjust the registration fee, and it will modify both. Additionally, the registration fee will go up for 2027, and we are increasing the market decontrol review fee from double of whatever the registration rate is to triple, because it is a much more time-consuming review process than we ever anticipated. I think it should be fairly charged. For capital improvement surcharge, a couple of minor tweaks, adjusting the frequency of which you seek to obtain one, although they happen very, very rarely, to once every buyer, from once every tenant, and a reconfiguration of the process. Currently, from the most recent burden time this was amended, the ordinance would allow, well, didn't allow, it required that the first step would be a landlord wanting to do a capital surcharge, they had to go to the landlord, I mean, they had to go to their tenants, and try and get consent of them first, and then go to the board if they were unable to, and notify the tenants of the board hearing. So the board, the tenants could have their say before the board makes a determination. This changes the order of that a little bit and cleans it up where the landlord can go to the board directly, notify the tenants, tenants can come to the meeting, and then optionally, they can obtain the consent of the tenants to, you know, skip the board process. But it's sort of this, an efficiency change, right? So you don't have to do one step before you do the other. You can kind of choose the angle on how you want to work it. And then with utilities, we are adding a provision to address when water meters are in buildings that are mixed use with residential above and ground for commercial. If the landlord currently is divvying up water, they might be divvying it up inclusive, if the building only had one meter, inclusive of the water of the, of the commercial tenant, which would be pretty unfair and inadequate to the residential tenants above. And so this creates a process by which if the landlord were to choose, well, they have to do this in order to be able to pass the water cost off to the tenants, they would have, in a mixed use building, they would have to submeter the commercial components at least, and then a portion of that submeter, of the cost of that submetering, they could pass along to the tenants over the course of five years of the minor increase. We've run the numbers on that. In some cases, it's as much as a dollar a month. The absolute worst-case scenario possible is probably around $15 a month. It's a very de minimis increase, but it also creates a incentive to get this right and get those commercial units submetered in those buildings so that the residential tenants are not paying water for, not themselves.
Thank you. We remain fellow council members. Have any questions or comments? Again, we'll prepare to open up the public hearing on this one. Again, we have up to five minutes, one time up. Yes.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville. Thank you for asking Mr. Dominguez to explain the proposal. Seems like much of it is non-controversial, though. I have to ask, whose idea was it to change the capital improvement surcharge from 10 to five, or, right, from 10 to five, from every 10 to every five?
Mr. Dominguez?
We feel like it's a way to encourage landlords to more actively invest in their properties, whereas right now, the main position in our code that landlords take advantage of is the market decontrol, which requires some semblance of investment. And the capital allows tenants to stay, right? The other method encourages landlords to find new tenants or potentially create, you know, in inhospitable conditions or the like. This is a way to make improvements to the property, invest in your property while keeping your tenants and not creating displacement of your tenants. Once every 10 years is pretty frequent. It's a decade. Once every five years is the same standard that we use for the market decontrols. We thought that it would be a reasonable way to approach it, and for what it's worth, I think for the duration that I've been director, I think we've had one capital surcharge go through the process. So it's not a frequent thing.
Thanks for that answer. So, I mean, it didn't address my question of whose idea it was. It sounds like Mr. Dominguez supports it, and it's, you know, something he's interested in seeing. Can anybody tell me if the rent control board members were consulted about this?
I'm not sure, Mr. Dominguez.
The rent control staff was a part of the discussion in the drafting of this ordinance, but not specifically the rent control board.
Okay, well, you know, respectfully, I would ask the council to hold this ordinance and allow the rent control board to give their take or their perspective. I'm also concerned about the process that was used to put this on your agenda today. As you recall, you know, I asked for some details after your vote to, you know, schedule this hearing. I asked during the public comment at the end of your meeting, the general public comment, and was told that information was, quote, "not available at this time." You said, quote, "We're still looking into certain things or whatever, so we don't have the whole thing." I was a little surprised. It sounded like you hadn't read the ordinance before casting that vote to schedule this hearing on it. And, yeah, when I asked if the council had actually seen the ordinance, you said, quote, "I've seen parts." So can you clarify for me, this, you know, basically, four-page document here is the ordinance. Were you and your colleagues given the ordinance before you were asked to vote on first reading?
As I mentioned to you last time, things on first reading get to the second reading. In the meantime, information and questions that we have or whatever are done to the appropriate people, and so we don't necessarily have all the information. So we basically step it on for second reading. And in the meantime, that's when we get our questions answered.
I understand, but did you have a copy of the ordinance itself?
I think we probably did.
Probably did, okay.
I just can't say 100%.
Okay, it's just.
We usually do.
It's concerning to me that, you know.
That's why we have questions about it. We look at it, and we might have questions about it.
I get that. Did you have questions about it?
We did.
Okay.
We got them answered. We got it at the second reading. As Mr. Dominguez pointed out here, a lot of the things that he said is informationable.
I, I got it. I just don't understand why you wouldn't have opened it up to dialogue at your last meeting, because a member of the public who cares deeply about rent control was asking you what changes you were trying to make and why, and you kind of put up this wall that.
Well, we, we usually don't discuss first readings.
Why not?
Because there's so much to go into it before. It's not set and done. There's other things that are going in.
But, okay, so was any of the language changed between the first reading and second reading? Or was it done when you voted the first time, right? If you were making a change, you'd have to use a resolution to change it, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it was in writing.
Questions about.
You did have it. I came up here and asked a question about it, and you refused to answer on the grounds that it was about a first reading ordinance. I think there is no policy, rule, or law that requires you to. I think there is no policy, rule, or law that requires you to take that position, and by taking that position, you effectively suppressed the dialogue about it and delayed the dialogue about it until this moment here, and that's a mistake. You shouldn't take that position when people come and ask questions, whether it's about a first reading ordinance, second reading ordinance, resolution, or anything else. You should do your best to answer the questions and start the dialogue instead of putting up walls.
Thank you. Anyone else on the, uh, rent control ordinance? Yes, sir.
Eric Spear, Jamesburg. I just want to echo, uh, the importance of getting input from the rent control board before a vote is made on this, and I would like to, uh, request, uh, that this be tabled until that's done.
Thank you. Anyone else on this? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Council President, if I can just, um, chime in a little bit here with respect to the speaker's comments. Basic to the legislative process is a bill, as, as ordinance really is, is introduced for first reading. That particular bill is done, uh, in that matter for consideration by the council for public discussion. So the, the council president is entirely accurate when an ordinance is introduced, and as has been the case with this body, we don't discuss all the details of it on first reading. Um, the ordinance is published, people have an opportunity to review it, to read it, and at second reading, before it's adopted and made into law, uh, the questions and comments are, are asked at that time, or objections, whatever it may be. So that's the basic legislative process. I understand Mr. Cradaville doesn't like that process, but that's how it works. And certainly, you know, he could ask questions, but if the council's not prepared to answer specific questions, they don't have to, he could ask the questions at the public hearing when the actual ordinance is considered for adoption. And that's historically how it works with this body and with many other legislative bodies that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Uh, number six is an ordinance to amend and supplementary revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title XV, Buildings and Construction in Regard to Permit Fees and Hold Harmless, uh, Requirements. Mr. Valenti, can you?
Yes, Council President, members of the council. Uh, this is specific to the crane portion of the ordinance. We are increasing crane fees from one fifty to two fifty. Our research is, and we haven't looked at fees since, I think, two thousand and eight and two thousand and seven. These are still less and more competitive than the fees that Newark, Jersey City, Hoboken charge. The second portion is that, uh, the application, uh, you can have applicant and then a crane company, or the crane company can be the applicant. In the past, it wasn't codified, but we typically got the indemnification, hold harm, uh, hold harm agreements from both parties. If the applicant was separate from the crane company, we're just codifying, but we want that hold harmless agreement to your office.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D.
Any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments? Seeing none? We're about to open up the, uh, ordinance to public hearing. Once again, any members of the public wish to discuss anything about this ordinance, please come to the microphone. Move up to five minutes. Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We then have ordinances on first reading, an ordinance to adopt a redevelopment plan for the New Brunswick Parker Landing Lane redevelopment plan area in the City of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance, setting down December seventeenth, twenty three, five, five thirty PM, same day as the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. Number two is an ordinance to amend and supplementary revise general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Ten Twenty, Handicap Parking, Section Ten Twenty Zero One Zero, Schedule Thirty Nine, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, Adding Forty Seven Wright Place, One Oh Nine Baldwin Street, and Two Sixty Seven Seaman Street.
I move the ordinance, setting down December seventeenth, twenty three, five, five thirty PM, same day as the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have Resolutions One to Thirty Two. Uh, that's first, Mr. Valenti. Number seven is a proof amendment of Resolution R-092519. Uh, we have a constituting an increase over sixty-seven thousand dollars. Mr. Valz, could you comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Council President. Garrison Enterprises, a vendor that we used to put, uh, ballots in, uh, in order to make those still on the pressure, typically, we just have done that when we were making water main repairs. Uh, we also have to do that when we lay new water mains, uh, as part of water main projects, when we can't get shutdowns on, on the side streets, uh, by the city. Using our vendor, we're actually saving a little bit of money, uh, rather than having a contractor that's laying the new water mains, who is, uh, sometimes as much as like twenty percent. So we tapped our, uh, resolution a lot harder, uh, because we found a way from letting the contractor that was doing the water mains, uh, contract that part out. So this, this gets us, uh, some invoices that, that has been coming in, uh, and should take us to the end of the, the term as a whole.
Thank you. We're about to open it up to the public for the resolutions. If you have any questions on the resolutions, if you please give your name and address for the record. If you could, please tell us what item number you're talking about, and we'll go from there. We have up to five minutes. One time up.
Hi there. April La Claus, one fourth of Sedan Street, New Brunswick. For, uh, Resolution Number Twelve, I just was wondering if we could get a little bit more information on what the, uh, NJ DOT grant will be used for?
Which one was that?
Number Twelve, the, the DOT grant.
Mr. Valenti?
Uh, yes, that is, uh, this is, uh, this is more wise, uh, during West construction, we were awarded, um, a grant from the NJ DOT for Lewis Street. The grant is to improve the intersections of Close and Somerset and Lewis and Hamilton by adding a, a more controlled, uh, more detailed device, you know, provide left turn lanes to queue on either direction at Lewis Street from both locations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, the other resolution I wanted to ask about is, uh, Number Twenty Nine, uh, with regards to the Middlesex County Healthcare Kiosk, um, which I think is a great program, and I'm just, uh, wondering how many healthcare kiosks are there currently in New Brunswick? And do we have any information on how, uh, successful that program has been, how well utilized those services are?
I don't see any, Mr. Valenti. Two right, at the Unity Square, and, yes, at this point, this is one, so two.
Okay, two. Um, and I understand the appropriate person isn't here, but if we could get an update in the future on how well that program is going, I think that would be very valuable information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick. Today, we'll start with seventeen, uh, a couple of appointments to the Community Arts Council, I guess the reappointments. I see Robert Belvin, I know he's with the library. Melissa Peppin, uh, what, uh, arts organization is she a part?
Mr. Val.
It's Council President, members of the council, uh, this is a reappointment, so I know that she's already served in this capacity and has really performed admirably, uh, as far as the specific connection, I don't have that information available this evening, but this is a reappointment, she's already served in this, in this capacity.
Well, well, that may be true. I believe there are, uh, requirements for folks on this council to either be city residents or to be part of an arts company, so I don't, I'm just, uh, asking which one.
She's part of the American...
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, great.
So, you know, there's, uh, I'm also very involved, she's really involved. I remember when I first got involved, she interested a lot of folks in the American community, so I know she's involved in New Brunswick.
And they have their museum.
Great, great. Um, I'll move on to nineteen, this is some appointments to the Cable Television Citizens' Advisory Committee. Did anyone tell me, uh, you know, how many times this committee has met in the past, let's say, year?
No, Mr. Val.
I don't believe there have been any meetings in the past year, Council President.
Okay. Um, I believe there is a member of the, uh, committee here. Can you ask Mr. Cisco when they last had a meeting?
Mr. Cisco, do you want to answer that?
I've never been asked to go to a meeting. Um, I just got re, I have a degree to reappoint since I live in the city, and, uh, figured out, you know, by being on a board.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So we don't know the last time that this board actually had a meeting. Um, can anybody tell me what they've accomplished in the past twenty years? Because I've, I've been, you know, following the city about that long, living here that long, I haven't heard or seen them do anything, so I guess I'm just wondering what it is they do.
Well, if there's a problem or something, and, uh, to see whether or not we have competition amongst some cable television networks.
I'm sorry, what?
Council President, if I may, the, amongst the many responsibilities that board has, it is to, uh, review and maintain our franchise agreement, as it relates to our cable franchise operating town, um, and that agreement is reviewed on, much more than, they don't find every year, it's like, oh, yeah, it's not, is that, okay. So when, when that group convenes, comes upon it, every board?
It's ten, twenty years.
So ten or years, sorry.
Okay.
So when that contract comes due, the group will convene, as they would.
So every time there's a contract negotiation, that's when the board does their work?
That's part of the process.
Okay, what else do they do?
If there's any other real problems they need?
Problems with cable television.
Cable service.
Okay. Um, I'll move on to twenty-one, the appointment of Mr. McTiernan. Can anybody tell me how long he's been in the, on the Parking Authority Board? It's been as long as I've been following.
I'm not sure, Mr. Val.
I don't have it in the street, I'm sorry.
Okay, and I'm sure you, as a former board member, worked with him, and you know his day job, as long as I've been alive, has been government relations for Robert Wood Johnson Hospital. I think it was called Middlesex General back when he started working there. Isn't it true that that's the biggest customer of the Parking Authority, the, the hospital?
Hmm, I don't know.
Okay. Um, the reason I'm bringing this up is I think, uh, you know, no disrespect to Mr. McTiernan, but, um, we need change, and I think that having, uh, a person who has a conflict when it comes to the authority's biggest customer, or one of them, uh, is not the best person to be chairing the Authority Board. Um, I think there's a number of problems with the way the Parking Authority has been run under his leadership that I've mentioned to you many times, and I'll try to work into my remarks later, but, um, yeah, I just don't think it makes sense to have a Robert Wood Johnson executive be the head of the Parking Authority, at the same time that they're trying to build a parking deck largely to meet the parking needs of Robert Wood Johnson Hospital. There's obviously, uh, mechanisms in place to recuse oneself when there is a conflict of interest, but I think in the interest of avoiding that altogether, you could find another qualified person to take this seat, and respectfully, would ask you to table this and, uh, look at other, other leaders who could step in and step up after Mr. McTiernan's decades of service.
Thank you. Anyone else on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes, but I'm going to abstain from Resolution Twenty Eight.
Do we know that? Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have, uh, items for discussion by council, the proposed twenty-twenty-six city council meeting schedule. Mr. Val.
Yes, uh, Council President, members of the council submitted for your, uh, review and approval that is the potential, uh, two thousand twenty-six meeting schedule. We charted out, uh, legal holidays, and we see no conflicts with, uh, first and third Wednesdays of every month. Uh, we propose the last, uh, meeting of the year, two thousand twenty-six, December twenty-nine, should, uh, should businesses necessitate that, as has been the case in the past, starting with the second meeting in May, that the time for commencement would be five o'clock, that would run, uh, through till the first meeting in September. September second would be a five o'clock start, all other meetings would be a five-thirty start. Um, if there's no questions or comments with respect to the proposed schedule, I will submit for your approval at the next council meeting, a resolution to adopt the meeting schedule for two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you. Anybody else on the council have anything to, just that, uh, it's nice to see councilmen back again. Hope everything is okay.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, we're about to open up the public for the public, uh, meeting. Uh, if you have anything to say, now's your time, we have the public portion of the meeting. Same thing, up to five minutes. Uh, name and address, just for the record. One time up. Yes, sir.
Eric Spear, Jamesburg. How many hours per week is the New Brunswick Police Department Arrive Together program fully operational?
I think, Mr. Drews, you have some, uh, or, no, or...
Yes, um, Captain Hoover is prepared to provide the information as, as questions are asked.
Sure, Council President, uh, you, you know, the police department participates in the Arrive program eight hours a week on Thursdays.
Um, question is to both the council and/or the captain, uh, is the police department, is the council satisfied that eight hours per week is enough mental health crisis intervention for the citizens of, uh, New Brunswick?
I don't think the amount of hours is ever going to be enough for whatever, but Captain Hoover?
I agree, Council President, I don't think it's ever enough, but it's, uh, it's working for what we do have.
Captain Hoover, if you don't mind, that is not the only mental health resource, correct?
That's correct. Uh, number David R. Luth is on call to us, says they are a labor force maintenance agency out of public, twenty-four hours a day. Uh, additionally, we have numerous New Brunswick police officers who are certified crisis intervention technicians, respond to these calls themselves.
Following question is either for the council or to the captain if they can answer. What obstacles are in place from preventing the expansion of, uh, this program to more than just eight hours per week?
Um, actually, I actually think that could actually be directed to the county, or the County General's Office, because we don't set up this type of program.
Um, no. I, I need to know specifically from the police department what they would need to run the program for more hours than just eight per week. So, um, if the council doesn't have any answer to that, if the captain can speak to, whether it's staffing, training, money, overtime, there's an answer other than just asking the Attorney General.
Council President, I could maybe just fill a little details here, that may be helpful to the council on this question.
Thank you.
Um, the Arrive program, while it's in New Brunswick one day a week, is in four other communities in this area, and we serve as a consortium, so there's five days coverage through the Arrive program. And in the absence of that program, when, you know, if somebody is engaged on a scene, and there is additional resources needed, we have offered mental health and through the county program. So there is twenty-four hour, seventy-week coverage for mental health support needs as relates to policing. The program is run by exclusively the Attorney General's. The Attorney General's program, we participated, we were early adopters to it, and through these types of shared services, it's constantly being expanded. So I, I'm not sure what hurdles, I, I know there are hurdles, because in our research on this matter, the coverage is there twenty-four seven.
I'm a little confused. You're saying the coverage is there twenty-four seven. The captain says the services are in operations eight hours a week. Is it twenty-four seven or eight hours a week?
The Arrive services are in New Brunswick, eight hours one day a week. Other communities, making up that five-day schedule reference, have the Arrive counselors there as well. So if something were happening in New Brunswick, and the councilor in Edison could respond, they would respond to a New Brunswick incident, making something New Brunswick state that happened.
Thank you for the clarification. Uh, Council President, if, um, I'm correct in assuming, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, you would like to see an increase in the crisis mental health services to the residents of the City of New Brunswick. the City of New Brunswick. What are you and the council willing to do to increase or enhance those services?
Well, we'll have ongoing discussions as to what we can do, especially for staffing, finances, et cetera, things like that.
Okay, any immediate-like action items that you intend to do to prevent another tragedy?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
You go. Anyone else on the public?
Hi there, April Niklaus, 143 Sedam Street, New Brunswick. I wanted to follow up once again on a subject that I've raised a number of times, including at the last meeting, about what the city is doing in response to the police killing of Deborah Terrell back in August. At the last meeting, Council President Anderson assured us that there are conversations that are happening, there are things that are being considered, but the public is not, I guess, allowed to be a part of those conversations. And so what I'm wondering is, when will the public be allowed to know what steps the city is considering taking?
At the right time and place. I can't decide.
So is that in a month, is that in a year, is that after, after we're all dead? I mean, can you give us anything, like literally anything here?
Just waiting for the Attorney General and the grand jury to come back and...
So you're saying that the city, you, your position is that the city cannot or will not do a single thing until the Attorney General?
No, I'm not saying they're not doing a single thing, but we're doing some things behind the scenes, but we can't talk about the other ones, especially since the lawsuit came about.
Okay, so what you're saying in response to public concern on this issue is, don't worry, we're doing things, we just can't tell you about it? Is that the official response here?
Pretty much.
Okay, well, that is a little concerning, and...
That's all I can tell you.
I'm gonna keep asking about it, because I feel like this is certainly an issue of public concern, and the council, when this incident first happened, was, and there were many dozens of members of the public here, the council assured us that there would be things that would be done, that all of the recommendations, all of the requests that the public was making for do this, that, or the other thing, that the council was writing it all down, that you would be discussing it, that you would be having conversations, that you would, you know, get back to us on what it is that you're going to do, and it seems like you have no sense of accountability to follow up on any of that, and that's disappointing. I can't really say anything more than that. That's, it's incredibly disappointing.
That's okay.
Good evening once again, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Echo the comments of the last speaker. I think it's pitiful that you still can't give a proper response to these questions. You're still trying to keep it a secret. Who was the killer cop that ended the life of Deborah Terrell? And I'm here to say it was Officer Hosway Plaza. Can you tell us, is Officer Plaza still employed by the city?
I believe Captain Hoover indicated that he was still employed.
So he's still employed as of today? Is he on active duty?
I believe he is.
You believe he is on active duty?
I believe it's a personnel matter, and he's being done as necessary, the police department decides.
Okay, so you said he's on active duty, but now you're saying it's a personnel matter, which is correct. Is he on active duty or not? We deserve to know, we need to know.
Well, he's a police officer, so he's getting paid, I'm sure.
That was my next question, and I'm pretty sure he is getting paid, but I need to know, is he on active duty, patrolling our city with a badge and a gun? Is that not fair to ask?
These are, these are personnel matters, and Mr. Cradville, I'd like to leave these questions in writing to the police department, but we have to respond to it. But as per public comment, I don't want to take the time. We shouldn't be able to use this back, particularly our personnel.
Speaking of, speaking of that, you mentioned that there's a lawsuit. What is the docket of the lawsuit? What is the caption of the case?
There's no caption as of yet. It has been served with a notice of claim.
Right, so there's no lawsuit, is correct. It's unfair to say there's a lawsuit.
That's pending litigation, Mr. Cradville.
There are certain processes that you have to go through.
He said lawsuit. He said there's a lawsuit. Council President, is there a lawsuit or not? Was that correct or incorrect when you said that?
They have to do certain procedures and certain things for the city ahead of time, and that's what they are doing.
Does not answer my yes or no question. I'll reclaim my time, and I'll move on to the Middlesex County Municipal JIF. I am so sick of the constant gaslighting about this. Earlier this year, I brought to your attention concerns about a firefighter who was not getting the payments that the JIF was supposed to make to that city employee, and Mr. Drewless led you to believe everything was fine, that all the cases are being handled appropriately and benefits are being paid out in accordance with the law. Well, that's not true. According to attorney Patricia Love, who represents a different firefighter who secured a judgment for payment from the court system, she came to this chamber on October 30th. I encourage you to watch the video from the MCM JIF meeting. I spoke to her today, and she told me her client's judgment still has not been completely paid. Quote, "It's come in drips and drabs. We're still waiting for one more check. It's not completely paid." Well, the law says it was supposed to be paid within two months. She saw my video of the JIF September board meeting where the board assured me that claims were being paid out in a timely fashion, and knowing that to be untrue in her client's case, she came to the JIF's October board meeting. Her remarks were clear, two months is what the law said, and now I asked you about this at your last meeting, and Mr. Drewless said, quote, "There was a misunderstanding about the payment. They worked it out." What is the truth? Is the MCM JIF making its payments timely or not? Because he said all claims are being paid. Maybe that's true, but are they being paid timely as required by law?
Drewless, you know?
Mr. Cradville, attending the next Middlesex JIF meeting, previous questions forward to the staff. Who can answer that? I'm, I'm just a commissioner, sorry.
Understood. Isn't it true there is no scheduled meeting of that board?
I'm sorry?
Is there a scheduled meeting of that board, or is it true that there is no scheduled meeting of that board that you're directing me to take my questions to?
I think it'll be...
When?
I don't have the schedule for it, Mr. Cradville.
Okay, because it hasn't been scheduled yet, so you're directing me to a dead end.
I'm directing you to a dead end. I think your characterizations are unfair, and then this guy, and I suggest that you...
Okay, well, I'm gonna reclaim my time and continue. Yet another ticket has been dismissed after the recipient informed prosecutor of the illegitimacy of the NVPA's parking enforcement officers. We heard from Mr. Katniss previously that there's, quote, or maybe not a direct quote, but a process or a procedure in place for that, but he also admitted he hasn't seen the certifications, and, you know, I would just simply ask, why then does the Parking Authority claim not to have any of them on file? I'll give you the Oprah request right here. Maybe Mr. Castaneda can look into it. Why are they saying they don't have them if there's a process in place for that to happen?
Mr. Sham, Mr. Bell?
I don't know what the Parking Authority says or doesn't say. Mr. Cradville, obviously, it's open to them, whatever they respond is their response. I don't represent the Parking Authority. I can't make representations about what the Parking Authority does or does not do.
Okay. Mr. Castaneda, did you know that the Parking Authority's been sued for discrimination and that the case has apparently been settled? Can anybody tell me how much, what the terms of the settlement are?
I was ready to talk to them, but I can certainly find out.
Okay, I do have some documents for you, sir. I'm just gonna hand them to the clerk, and she can give them to you. I had more to talk about today, but I hear my time's up, so hopefully I'll be able to get a minute with you afterwards.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public, on the public comments? Seeing none?
Yes. Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.